All right, we're just gonna wait for this. Who speak for this? Now we're ready. Time is 7:31. Call this June first meeting of the Yardley Borough Council to order. Please rise and join me in saying allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miss Thompson, if you could do our roll call to see who's present.
Matthew Ross.
Here.
Caroline Thompson.
Present.
Dana Freya.
Here.
Corinne Biner.
Private.
Goodnight, Seba Morris.
Here.
John McCann.
Here.
And Matt Kurt in this house.
All right, with six members present, that constitutes a quorum. First stop this morning, this evening, welcome back everyone. It's been a while since we've been here in person. As a review, our guidelines for this evening, in terms of masking, not masking, we are following CDC guidelines. If you are vaccinated, you do not need to wear a mask. Fully vaccinated counts as two weeks after your second dose of either Pfizer or Moderna, or two weeks after your lone dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So thank you for joining us in person, and let's hope that we remember how to do this. All right, our first item on the agenda tonight is a proclamation recognizing June 2021 as Pride Month. I will read the proclamation into the record and then ask for a motion to approve. Whereas the month of June is historically recognized as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in commemoration of the riots beginning June 28, 1969 at Stonewall Inn in New York City, and whereas this nation was founded on the ideals that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and all human beings are born free and equal, and whereas LGBTQ individuals have had immeasurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country, whereas the Borough of Yardley has adopted an ordinance to prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity, whereas structural inequities and discrimination continue to oppress the LGBTQ community, particularly LGBTQ people of color, whereas the Borough of Yardley is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality of LGBTQ people living and working in our community, and whereas the celebration of Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to engage in dialogue that builds acceptance, advances equal rights, and seeks to end social inequities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Yardley Borough Council hereby proclaims the month of June 2021 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community, and be it further resolved that the progress Pride flag will be flown throughout the month of June 2021 in recognition of Pride Month and the LGBTQ residents whose influence and lasting contributions have shaped our community. We have a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second. Motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Any discussion from council? Any from the public? Ms. Pearl matter?
Yes, I would just like to say no problem with your Pride flag, but I do think you shouldn't have put it up until you had this vote.
Thank you for the comment. Any further? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries six to zero.
There was a, did you get mine, folks?
Yep. You got it?
Thanks.
All right, next on our agenda, community announcements. This would be an opportunity for members of council to share and add for the public good. We've got a community announcements tonight.
I have a couple. So Yardley Borough Council presented three letters of congratulations to Gold Award winners and six letters of congratulations to Silver Award winners at the Sandy Run Service Unit Bridging Ceremony on May 23rd. So it was a really nice event. In person was nice to be there again, recognizing some of the wonderful accomplishments of the young ladies in our community. The Memorial Main Street Mile, which was put on by our Parks and Recreation Board, was held yesterday, and we had 188 finishers. And the winner was Connor Harriman with a time of 4 minutes and 26 seconds. Connor's 26 and is a Lower Makefield resident, attended Tinsbury High School, and had previously won one of our Yardley 5K races. So I think that's an event that I really appreciate that Parks and Rec puts on, and it benefits our Legion Post in Yardley. And then finally, you all may not know, we have a tattoo studio in Yardley Borough now, and they are doing a Pride Month t-shirt event where they are selling shirts designed by the tattoo artists, and the proceeds will benefit the Rainbow Room in Bucks County. So if you're interested, you can go to YardleyTattoo.com to purchase a t-shirt.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
I have an announcer.
Go ahead, Mr. Biner.
You can never tell if people can hear you on the other end, but I'm glad you can. So some of you might know that it's an organization called BRAM, B-R-R-A-M. It's the Bucks residents for Responsible Airport Management. And they actually have a meeting tonight because the Trenton Roadster Airport is working on trying to expand their parking lot and terminal, and this is considered a very important meeting. And the, obviously people who are here cannot attend there, however, from now until June 16th, it is possible to put a public comment in, and those who are concerned about airplane noise in their, over their property, might want to do that. And so what you do is you go to their website, which is B-R-R-A-M.org, so five letters, bram.org. And it explains there how to put a public comment in, and then you can go and do that. So I encourage those of you who, it's important to you to take a step and do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public announcements from council? Any public announcements? All of these to the public as well, community events, anything anyone wants to share? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting and move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on our agenda, you'll be given the opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that particular business item. Residents, for us to please come to our front center microphone, state your name and address for the record, and keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. Leave any public comment this evening. Ms. Pearl matter?
Dawn Pearl matter, 18 West College Avenue. I'm following up on two items that were brought up at previous meetings, and whenever you were going to get back to us. One was the incident where there were three payments totaling $21,421.61 made to Armor &amp; Sons Electric when a property owner had hit the electrical conduit with their backhoe. You had said last time that you're going to look into having insurance cover it. I'm curious if that was ever done.
I don't know if we have any progress on that, but we'll, can take a look?
Pete's looking.
Okay, thank you. Pete is our agent, our insurance agent.
Oh, okay. And the other one was involving Tanner and Taffery. We had asked if any violations were ever given to them for an April 24 concert and for continuing to operate with a kitchen when they are not permitted to have a kitchen with accessory use. Have any violations been given?
I'm gonna, I believe we did send.
We did send.
Okay, yes.
Oh, okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any further public comment this evening? Going once, going twice, instead of the public comment portion of the meeting, closed. Next item is consideration of our consent agenda dated for today, June 1st. Consists of just two items tonight. That's approval of the bills list dated for, I'm sorry, I'm drawing the verse already here. Approval of our minutes from our May 18 meeting, approval of the bills list dated for today, June 1st. Would any member of council like these to be considered separately? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Seba Morris, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any questions, comments, concerns from council regarding the consent agenda? Any comments from the public? Ms. Pearl matter?
Yes, I have a couple comments on the bills list. Check number 19152 for $5,151.73 for Carry the Load Texas donation. Why is the borough donating to Carry the Load for a business in Texas and a nonprofit business?
I believe we were pastor.
The pastor.
Yeah, so it's funds that we raised from donations. It's just a pastor.
Oh, okay, so that's how that's done. The other one is check number 19155, Graybar Invoice Number 9321411422 for $1,265. Graybar is another electrical company. What are those expenses for?
Computer stuff.
Computers?
Department.
For the police department? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. Move to Chief Kelly for your report and business item.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item I have is monthly statistics for May 2021. Last month, the police department handled 520 calls for service, issued 67 moving traffic citation, issued two parking tickets, investigated a traffic accident, and made one arrest for DUI. The second item I have, sir, is thanks to all the officers and auxiliary officers and Lower Makefield police officers and explorers that did a yeoman's job this weekend by sort of holding and jockeying around closing those streets with three different events that were overlapping. And when we do that job, a lot of people don't realize how much goes into it, but we had between 15 and 20 people assigned all the time to get that done, so I'd like to extend thanks to them. And the last item I have is an agenda item, and the agenda item is for a purchase of our new vehicle, which was postponed, as you know, from last year due to COVID and our budgetary constraints. I have Joe Harris in the back, one of our PFCs, who did most of the work on assembling a lot of this. He'll be here for questions at the end if we have any. I'll go into the agenda now. The Yardley Borough Police Department currently only utilizes four police vehicles that are fully marked and fully equipped. Vehicles range in age from two to eight years. The oldest of these vehicles is a 2013 Ford sedan assigned as Unit 7902. At current staffing, these vehicles are now used by two officers much of the time in response to more service calls than in past years. Law enforcement agencies across the country have developed life cycles of patrol vehicles that aim to provide safety to the officers, efficiencies to the agency, and cost reduction for the parent governmental body. In 2002, a polling of 15 law enforcement agencies showed that the mean average of 70,800 miles was the correct for rotation and replacement. Due to the geographical layout of Yardley Borough and our maintenance schedule, we set our rotation threshold at between 90,000 and 100,000 miles. We have established a vehicle rotation of one vehicle replaced every two years and a maximum patrol lifespan of eight years. Target mileage in years of use reflects a higher probability of mechanical breakdown due to not only major components such as engines and drivetrains, but also other ancillary parts such as suspension components, brake lines, spring, charging systems, et cetera, which wear more rapidly in police vehicles than in their civilian counterparts. With one such vehicle meeting the replacement criteria, we are seeking, seeing a rise in repair bills for this car, and although not tracked, presumably efficiencies for lost time for repairs. There is also a question of fleet liability. In the event of an accident, liability may be where poor maintenance equipment gets called in the question. This can be more problematic where the vehicle involved goes beyond police best practices for replacement. Through the use of the Pennsylvania Co-Stores Program, after receiving eight bids, the police department has identified Fred Beans of Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, as the vendor with the most competitive price for the vehicle identified. The Ford Explorer SUV was quoted as $33,207. Utilizing a lease finance system from Santander Bank, the payment is estimated as being $8,942.60 per annum for four years, with the first payment due one year following delivery of the vehicle to the borough. Following the last payment, ownership of the vehicle transfers to the borough. It is expected by replacement of the old issue of savings will be achieved in the area of major repairs. It should be noted that the purchase and installation of the emergency equipment, the transfer of our emergency radios, and the application of the decals are not included, and will be completed by S-K-D Tryons Emergency Upfitter at a cost of $10,400 utilizing our capital budget and miscellaneous equipment in the 2021 police budget. I respectfully ask that council consider a motion to authorize Fred Beans of Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, to enter into municipal lease agreement as specified in the above agenda.
All right, thank you, Chief. Us now, we have a motion from council for the purchase of this vehicle. Second. Motion made by Ms. Seba Morris, seconded by Mr. Ross, I guess. For the purchase of a new police vehicle, the total cost $33,207, which will be paid in installments over four years, and a one-time outfit cost of $10,400. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from council? Mr. McCann?
A couple questions. A lot of people, it is an SUV, a lot of people, at least last time we bought the pickup truck, asked, you know, why not buy a patrol car better on gas, potentially cheaper cost? Is there just a?
This is the Ford Explorer, which is pretty close to the sedan, but the sedan, I understand the sedan is not made anymore, is that correct?
The sedan is not made anymore, and it's the same drivetrain, so it's the same engine.
This is becoming the standard law enforcement now because they're not.
Yeah, I was just asking a question, I know that comes up all the time.
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
No, I'd just like to highlight this was budgeted, and Chief made a reference to capital budget. It's the police's capital budget, not our capital reserve account, so it is already in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions from the public on the site? Ms. Pearl matter?
Hi, I brought this up several times before. The Yardley Police Budget for 2021 is $686,998. You said that that's for four marked vehicles. How many unmarked vehicles do we have?
In the police department? No.
What about the code enforcement vehicle? Is that included in the four?
No.
So we actually have five vehicles, correct?
The borough as a whole, right, we do have another vehicle, correct?
Has five vehicles. At some point, our budget for the police department has never been this high. It's, we've never had this amount of patrol cars. I, I think that at some point, we have to start budgeting. The town is one square mile. We have never increased in population. We haven't increased in crime, so at some point, I think we should limit buying this new vehicle because the budget is really high. It's, a number of residents have told me that they were concerned when we added all those other police vehicles. I don't even know how many patrol at one time. I've never seen all four vehicles patrolling at the same time. Does that happen?
Were you at the parade this weekend?
I was at the memorial, so.
All four vehicles were used at the memorial.
And bicycles, we have bicycles also?
That's correct, and they were all used at the memorial also.
So other than the event, do we ever do foot patrols or bicycle patrols?
We do, ma'am. But this is about a car, and we're going down a different road here. I'd be more than happy to answer your questions while flying, but this has nothing to do with.
Well, it has everything to do with.
Say, the chief disagrees here. The motion at hand is regarding to the purchase, so we'll.
Well, if we had more bicycle patrols and more foot patrols, we wouldn't need to add another vehicle, so it is.
We're not adding another vehicle, ma'am. I got here seven and one half years ago. We had four vehicles. We still have four vehicles, so we just want to make that point. We did not add any.
We also have a code enforcement vehicle.
That was also here.
I'm gonna put an end to this one. Much of this debate took place when we passed the budget coming into 21. These were budgeted expenses. I don't see any sense in re-earbütating that particular debate. Do we have any further comment from the public? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries six to zero.
Can I ask a question with Chief on the earlier point, Mr. Patrols?
Sure.
June to the, North Main Street Traffic Group was wondering that they said they're seeing a lot of residents reported to me. They have seen increased speeding now that the roads are picking back up, increased truck traffic, especially in the mornings. And they were wondering if there's any patrols right now in North Main Street.
We regularly run speed patrols each and every day, each and every shift. We have extra patrols out right now doing speed enforcement. That was advertised on public media last week because of the loosening of their restrictions. We are still compounded by the fact that Pennsylvania law does not allow us to write for anything under 36 miles an hour on North Main Street. That is a state law and has nothing to do with the borough. We cannot begin to cycle until you're over 10 miles over. We are still concerned by the fact that we cannot use radar in Pennsylvania, so that sets up a whole series of problems for us, where we can only enforce between the white lines. And we have to get so close to the white lines that our police cars visible, and when our police cars visible, there is no speeding. But the answer to the question is yes, we run. And we had increased over the last week because of just what you're saying, sir.
And the radar bill didn't make it out of committee, which was good on the state level.
Yes, it is, that is a good rule, so we'll see if it keeps going.
Thank you.
I would just encourage those residents, come to public safety, and we talk about these statistics, these patrols and everything like this all the time. And I know that I can turn on the past, just encourage them to come to public safety, being said, that cost communication is the best way to communicate this answer.
Thank you. All right, Chief, that concludes all of yours?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Click down the line from Ms. Kletty for our engineers reporting some updates and our new agenda item.
Yes, so for general updates, I don't have anything different than the report that council was provided with. So unless anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to jump right into that agenda item.
I have a question about the Mary Yard Bridge.
That's the next item.
Oh, sorry.
I'll talk about.
We all got there.
Okay, so the agenda item is for 85 West Acton for the subdivision. If you would like, I can go over the waivers that are being requested, but it is nothing different from what the planning commission said as well. The only items that are still kind of lingering are separate from the subdivision. It's the disturbance activities that occurred, but the owner and applicant have been in talks with Bucks County Conservation District and are doing what they need to do in order to continue to follow up with them as well, so.
Great. All right, so for the bucky, subdivision's not only do a lot.
Well, it's not a formal hearing, but it's probably appropriate to ask the applicant to give a brief presentation on what the application is about, and then if council's so inclined, I can craft a motion for you to consider.
You're up.
Lee Brockman Slater from Kelly Close Engineers, professional land surveyor, that's what I did. I actually prepared the plan and did the fieldwork for this project. At this point in time, we have addressed all of the engineering comments on the May 26th, Grammy Devin Wright letter by Mr. Foley. And, you know, as Ms. Kletty said, we were asking for three waivers generally related to curbs and sidewalks and road lining and planning commissions supporting the waivers, and Mr. Foley also supports very few of those waivers. So it's a relatively simple subdivision, just creating one new lot, going to, you know, prepare full land development plans for applicants, the building department wants to house the subdivision. Do you have any other questions?
Any general questions?
The new property subdivision, is it incurred closer to Acton? Is that right?
It's further away from Acton.
Okay, on the other side.
On the other side, yeah, uphill, I look over.
All right.
To the left of the house.
Any else? All right, I will defer to Mr. Fosser to give us the proper word for this one.
If council's inclined to entertain a motion, the motion would be something along these lines. It would be a motion to grant final minor subdivision approval to the applicant, Sarah Walsh and W Builders, Inc., including the three waivers requested to the Yardley Borough subdivision and land development ordinance subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicants shall comply with the review letters of the Borough Engineer, Borough Planning Commission, the Bucks County Planning Commission. And number two, the applicant shall comply with the two earth disturbance reports issued by the Bucks County Conservation District and the stop work order issued by the borough.
Do we hear a motion to that effect? So moved. So second. All right, motion was made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Seba Morris. Any questions, comments, concerns from council on this item? Questions, comments from the applicant? Anything from the public? Ms. Pearl matter?
This is the property that did the clear cutting without permits, correct? Where the earth disturbance, were there any penalties assessed for that?
Other than through the stop work order and what the conservation district has done, they started to address the issues within the timeframe that we're expecting to sue.
So the borough did not issue any violations for?
No, the borough did. The borough issued a notice of violation and a stop work order, yes.
Oh, okay.
And then they have a certain timeframe to address the issues, and they've been working towards them.
But no financial penalty for it?
No, if they had not addressed anything within 60 days, then fines would have been levied, but they began to address them.
And that issue being outside the issue of the subdivision that's at hand, correct?
Correct, in a separate.
All right, so comment, Ms. Rappelbock?
I want to come with, I'd like some clarity. I don't understand the terminology in this case. Could you please give us clarity of what a subdivision is in this particular case?
Do you want me to tackle that?
Sure.
Sure.
So there is an existing parcel, a lot, and they are literally just dividing it into two, to be two lots, and then eventually they will do full land development on the new proposed lot with the new building.
Would that include tearing down the existing structure?
We don't know what their current plans are to do with the two new lots, but maybe Mr. Snyder can provide.
Well, I'd defer to Eric, but I believe your plans are to fix up, fix up, you see, the city has no one to go back to.
Again, this, this is an issue we've run into a couple times in the past. We've seen it in floodplain where there are, of course, many different issues that would be at hand regarding development, but in these cases, the subdivision is considered separately from any subsequent plans that may be proposed for that site. So in this case, all we're looking at right now is the division of one lot into two.
Well, thank you for that explanation, officially.
Any further comments? Hearing none, I will call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? None, motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Time to you, Ms. Kletty.
All right, so on to the project updates. So Mary Yard Bridge. I just received a direct contact for one of the permitting agencies that has been currently filming this up, so hopefully this week we will get answers and be able to submit everything. But I think I saw an email from John, but I didn't get to read it all the way through. I was traveling.
Okay, I was wondering if it was a federal agency.
It's, U.S. Fish and Wildlife is a federal one, and Susan's question about it being in regards to endangered species was correct. We just have to prove to them that we don't have that issue, and we should be fine.
Okay, and do we have a timeframe on when the permitting will be done and moved to good?
So we, once we get through that clearance, we can submit the general permit to DEP. I'm hoping that will go out by the end of this week, and then when they approve that, it should be two or three weeks. That's been the general timeframe, what we've seen so far. And then the other active project that we've got going on is North Main Street Sidewalk, but I believe that's a later attempt item.
Yes, yeah, we have some discussion and debate, so we can, it's up to you, Mr. Ross. Do you want to take it now?
We can do it now, we might as well do it now.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in, we're in engineering role, so unless anybody objects.
Can you take comments from the audit? Does anyone have another question on the Mary Yard Bridge? Because I know some people from committee are various, want to make sure they have a chance to say a question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Do we have an expected target?
Hopefully, I would say with where we're at right now and where we get the permits, we're putting out to mid, early August for construction.
Anything else? All right, so unless we've got any objections from council, we are going to take our other business item of North Main Street Sidewalk and move it to right now.
Okay.
So, take it away.
One thing.
Yourself.
I'll give a brief overview. So, the original design that we put forward for the alignment of phase two of the North Main Street sidewalk, based off of conversations with PICO, was going to result in the need for several trees to be removed if we were to move the existing utility poles back three to four feet from where their existing alignment is. When we learned of this, especially the fact that the majority of these trees are quite mature and dead smack in the middle of people's front yards, we came up with some options to try to avoid that. So the borough was provided with three different options of what we could possibly do to not have to relocate the utility poles, and so tonight we need to have a final decision on what alignment we're going to go with if we expect to get into construction by the end of this summer, so that we can submit our permits with the final alignment.
Thank you. And just for clarity's sake, this was a new set of regulations we had to comply with, not something we had to deal with in phase one?
Correct, yes. So PICO has updated their buffer requirements for their live wires. We still have not seen the actual spec of that. We're trying to request that because we believe that maybe some of their assumptions of which trees would end up needing to be removed is not accurate, but in time-saving efforts, we're trying to just figure out these alignments that we don't need to worry about the poles at all.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Ross, I think you've got a few.
Yes, so Public Works, Matt, several times to go over our options, and we feel that option three is the best to move forward to impact the homeowners the least and to get this project moving in a timely and costly, cost-effective basis. So Public Works is going to recommend that we go for option three, and that was in everybody's packet. I don't know if everybody got a chance to review all the options, if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns, we can talk about it now.
All right, and I believe we do have copies on our, on our front table there. If anybody needs to take a peek, it's fine to get up and look, but I guess if you just want to maybe give a short descriptive overview, the ideas that we're jogging now.
Yeah, so option three generally, to just give a brief description of it, keeps the sidewalk along the road as much as possible and only juts in when absolutely necessary to be able to go around it. I think that would be the easiest way to describe it.
Yeah, I think right now, the key areas where it is kind of jogging in is where we have utility poles right in the middle of where driveways are, and it's just to sort of avoid a situation where you're going to have to slope down to meet the driveway, up and then back around, and instead you can just kind of go behind and just keep it level and also avoid gesturing traffic in the driveway apron before trying to meet the driveways.
Matt, can you provide a, a bridge version of the strength of the third option for the record and for those in attendance?
Sure.
Why is this the recommended option?
Option three is, option two and three are the most time-saving and cost-effective of the three. Option one basically removes a lot of trees and has a lot of other costs and issues with impacting residents. Option two, which was, we discussed first, would have set the sidewalk about four feet in, but that would have impacted a lot of residents' issues where it would have impacted some trees, it would have impacted some shrubbery, it would have impacted some gardens and some pillars that were there. Three maintains the closest look to the original sidewalk design with keeping it along the road while also jutting in where it has to. We're saving, I think it's 17 trees by doing this, which is.
Between phase two and three.
Yeah, between phase two and three, which is a cost savings and also, we don't have to move trees, so that's, that's a definite plus on there. And this plan gets the sidewalk moving and the project completed by the summer, if everything goes as planned.
Approximate cost differences, timeline differences, permitting differences for the three options, where do we land with the third?
There aren't any in regards to timeline or permitting, that's why the decision had to be made today, so all of them would have been the same timeline. Will be recently the final HOP to pen down by end of this week or just because this option should have required too much reengineering. The only difference between option two and option three is that with option three, because of the location of some of the utility poles, we are required by ADA compliance to have 48-inch minimum clearance. So there are some situations where to accommodate that, we have to add additional patches of concrete, kind of creating some little islands around some of the utility poles. So that's slightly more material than option two, but option two would have resulted in impeding the hedges. I think so, yes, and, and the pillars and such, so. And the cost of the additional concrete is minimal, especially since we know what I have to do to your local.
As in minimizing?
We didn't do full design up, because we weren't trying to waste budget until we picked final design, but if we wanted those exact numbers, we could provide them later on if we go through option three just a year earlier.
Ballpark or parkment, do you have any idea?
Probably not more than 85,000.
Can I just jump in and also mention?
I guess, I can't quite tell, if now that I can share something.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just want to say that as a, I guess I'm really the only council person that actually is, is where the sidewalk is going to go. I bought my house 10 years ago hearing the sidewalk was coming in, so I'm happy that here it is, it's finally coming in, and I think it's going to help comp traffic, and it's a vital connection to connect different neighbors in the boroughs, so I want us to just remember the big picture here. It's really great that we're, that we're creating, including the, the parts of connecting the borough. I want to thank Matt Ross, John McCann, Paula, Liz, and R.D. for the hard work, the time spent, and flexibility. It is a complicated thing. Now, I have gone up and down North Main many, many times, spoken to many of my neighbors, and followed the path of this sidewalk, and, and it's complicated because there are requirements, being under state roads, there are PENDA requirements, there are pedestrian safety issues, there are cost issues, and there's how does people's properties get affected? And in an ideal world, you just put a sidewalk in and then you build houses, but in our case, we don't have that luxury because we build, we live in an historic place, which I think is a good thing. And especially, you know, I noticed in my neighborhood, people have pride in their homes, they've invested time and energy, in some cases like, you know, multiple generations in due to find their properties, and we want to support that. So technically, you can put a sidewalk anywhere in the rightest way, but as a matter of being neighborly, exercising good stewardship, to find a way to honor people's properties, while figuring out the path to sidewalk, you know, that's important, that we work together on it. And what I've been seeing is really encouraging, because I see a lot of dialogue between the residents and Paula and Public Works and the engineer to work out those issues in getting this sidewalk. Even though we're talking about option three, there's a lot of sort of like nitty-gritty details of taking a left here, taking a right there, that may still need to get worked out, and I just want to encourage the residents and the borough to keep doing that. I think it's been a good process, and we're really close to the end, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finer.
Can I just echo Councilman Finer's point that there was a lot of time spent, we went out there. I live on North Main, I live on the side that the sidewalk is going, my house is very close to the road, so I was particularly attuned to people's needs and understanding and walking that site. I think we really felt, and that's one of the things that helped us come to that, option three. That was something that we spent a lot of time, and we wanted to let the residents know. We did do diligence, we were out there, and even the engineer one day, and Paula was walking with us, and, and we were going through all the different options and looking at, you know, how this will affect even individual people's properties. So I certainly want to thank for all the residents that are coming out for this issue, but we did take your concerns and really listened to, to, to what you wanted as well out of this project, so.
So I think at this point, it would probably be appropriate to put a motion on the floor, and then we can have some focused debate if there is any desire for that.
I'll make a motion to approve option three of the North Main sidewalk project to be engineered and officially go with that, right?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson, to approve options.
We should discuss first?
We, we will, we will. Motion to approve option three, and are we rolling in this approval for the engineering work?
Correct.
As well? Okay, clear on the motion? All right, first, we will open to comments from council, which I know we sort of done already, but procedure-related, any further comments? All right, none from council?
Can that motion be, is that encompass the minor changes? Like, for example, I'm aware of, of one change already that's been made to option three in front of one property. Is there a way we can phrase that that incorporates sort of the ongoing, like, minor adjustments, that sort of like option three as the, as the primary focus, which is to stay out the road, allowing for minor adjustments?
I think saying engineered is fine, these were concept plans, so we haven't gotten into the nitty-gritty, so when we get into it, we can accommodate all the things that were discovered on the sidewalk.
Okay, I, I think it's a fair point that some of the really fine details, right, we haven't engineered the project yet, so they're going to be worked out, and that will be, again, be handled through Public Works Committee or Chair of Public Works, Mr. Ross. So I guess leave the motion as, as originally proposed?
Yeah, as originally proposed, and again, if, option three needs to be engineered, so as we're engineering it, as long as we keep to the, the, you know, the.
Budget.
Yeah, within the budget and within the, the option three's general path, then we're, we're fine.
Understood.
Yeah, so I think my concern, I, I love option three, I love that we've been working with the community and council has been going out and walking the route. My concern is when I'm hearing all things like tweaks and changes, that we might be getting into a, you know, an option four territory. It's kind of feeling a little bit like Mary Yard the Bridge, three years later, we're still trying to figure out what kind of bridge we're going to put in, so I think we need to make sure that we're going with option three. It's pretty much going to be how it's written in front of us tonight. We are not straying far from that unless it's, there is a.
Absolutely.
Reason from PENDA to stray there or a permitting issue.
We'll, we'll probably follow 98% of option three. There might be something that's moved small because when they're doing the final engineering, they find they can move something over a little bit, but everything keeps with option three and keeps with all PENDA regulations.
Yeah, the only time we will jog out is if we cannot meet the 48-inch requirement.
Thank you.
So just as a summary, we have motion to approve option three and begin the engineering work.
Correct.
As the plans are presented here tonight. So before I turn to the public, any final comments from council? All right, now ask for public comment on that motion. Yes, sorry, from the front?
My name is Tony Schim, I live at 112 North Main Street, and I spoke with a couple people about this so far. This jog out, actually jogging in, needs to get corrected to go straight across, or, you know, you have the one side of my driveway is here, and the other side of my driveway is here. I'm OCD, I can't have that, it's got to be here. So either it's here, or it's here. And the way the poles are, I measured the poles, these people around me, the poles are actually even closer to the road than my pole. My pole is six foot, three inches off the road, so there should be no reason why the sidewalk can't be close to the road all the way across my yard, just like Casper Rose's. It'll, it'll look real nice going down. I don't know why it jogs in. There's no reason why I should jog in, because my pole is actually one of the furthest ones back, so actually by jogging it back, you're moving in a foot further than it needs to go, because that pole was, again, six foot, three from the white line, so the other poles are about five foot, two. So I just, that's my whole thing, I think this looks awesome, I like the idea, but it just, I can't have one side of my driveway here, and the other side of my driveway here, because it's, it's going to be more stupid, I don't want to say, but it's going to be very wrong. And I just want to, you know, I, I don't know why, as I'm looking, you know, at my driveway, if you're turning to look, this jog in, there's, there's nothing there, like there's no trees, shrubs, whatever, I mean, I have a tree in my front here, I'll cut something down when I get home, you tell me, but it's, there's no reason for it to be jogging like that. And I just think, as you look down all the way down this street here, there's poles that are in the middle of the concrete, and there's a pole, you know, I mean, it's just that it is what it is for what we got, and I think heading up North Main, as you're going, it looks real nice, it's all along the road, why would you go into somebody's yard? You know, it's just kind of goofy to jog in, you jog out, and a wheelchair's going to be turning left, it's going to be turning right. It doesn't make much sense, you know, so that's just my opinion, and I want to just say that because whatever it is, that just needs to be fixed so that, like, it's going to be straight, because if not, I'm going to, all right, thanks.
112?
What's that?
112.
112.
Yes.
Can I just chime in that we, we have a proposal for dealing with that and on that property? That's already been corresponded about, so that's an example of like option three, but with, you know, a correction?
Thank you, we have another.
Are you aware about this?
Yeah, I think I could see that.
So, I'm 106 North Main. First of all, thank you for doing all this, and I know it's, you know, it's a tricky problem for you, so I appreciate your efforts to try to work with us. This is a much improved option, but in my part of the property, there's like, and then it starts jutting back in to Tony's point. I have over five foot between the pole and the edge of the white line, it's closest to the property. I would like this, the, the drive, uh, the sidewalk just to continue the street path. I don't know why I can't. I walked here from my house today, and I noticed that phase one is running on the road, and it looks great, and I would just like to continue that same, you know, path along the road, all the way up to Brooklyn. And I would also address Tony's concerns.
So I can speak to that. The reason we're not going the way phase one is, is because regulations changed, and the engineering team worked with what the new regulations are to be able to make the sidewalk possible. So anywhere where we're able to go straight, we're going straight. Anywhere where the regulations say it has to jut in or jut out, that's, that's what we're doing with that, to, to meet PICO's requirements. If this sidewalk was done two, three years ago, we wouldn't even be talking about this. It would be along the whole road and we'd be done. But with current PICO requirements, that's how it was engineered.
And PENDA, we have to maintain a small shoulder.
Still like to.
I believe in that area, it should be, it should be okay. We just might have to put an eye on it where the white pole is. That should be fine. I believe in that area that you're speaking about, there was, there were some issues where we were dealing with some driveways, and we didn't want to necessarily, where there was multiple driveways next to each other.
Yeah.
And instead of having the sidewalk have to dip down to accommodate the apron, and dip back up and dip back down to accommodate the apron, they just wanted to put it behind so that it could stay level. But if people just want it to be against the road, because that's what they prefer the alignment, then we'll do that, and we'll make sure that there aren't any humps in between, we'll just have a flat area.
Yeah, there's a couple of driveways that I want to pause in, there's a red name front, and which is, and it also look really, it look like, you know, this is probably what we need to do. Thank you for answering my questions, but, but just to maintain that consistency, I think would look better for, you know, the neighborhood, easier for the folks to walk, you know, on the road from those street cars, so. So, phase one approach up to one more beyond, I'm just.
Yeah, so again, the issue is that we can't maintain phase one because of the current regulations between PICO and PENDA. If we could, I would absolutely adore to do that, and that's what we tried to do first.
But we don't look into it, is that what you're saying?
And anywhere we can be as close to the shoulder as possible, the alignment will move to that.
But that's, is that, when you're saying that option three is the only option we know?
No, option three does not reflect that in every place that we can move it against the shoulder.
If we're not in the old block, don't worry about that, I will take them off, focus on some. on some of those.
But you would like us to have them salvaged, right? When they bring them up, we can just put them aside for you?
Yeah, just put them, yeah, I'll send them out, just, you go on, you go on, so...
Generally speaking, here, the challenge we have run into is that the way we did phase one is not an option.
No, you guys got a way with having a four-foot sidewalk against the road and that is not allowed safety wise at all.
Right, so it's, you know, we are trying our best in the design phase to accommodate and, you know, we're sort of stuck between this plan where we have to spend a lot of money to move the poles, remove trees, put in the sidewalk, and, you know, the other option is this plan where it sort of looks like a Tetris game and it winds up. And we're trying to get in the middle where we have something that's pretty straightforward, but doesn't require us to have to, essentially the tree removal is the issue, right? We're removing a lot of mature trees, but also the cost that also moving the poles.
Some of those trees would be three to five grand apiece.
Right, it would, it would put the project beyond the budget that we currently have.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, we have another public comment up here, so I'm going to, yep.
I'm Rick Frosty, 116 North Main Street. My life now, I would just like to express our support over the third set of plans and appreciate the work Councilman Ken did, Councilman Fineer, Paula, and your staff, it was a great compromise, you guys listened to us, our concerns. We would just ask that it be put into the midst, we request to have our driveway tiers drawn back into the plans. They were in all the original plans and we want just to make sure that they will remain it. We see the sidewalk as up against the street, which is great, we would love to see it all the way straight down through, you know, back into town if we could, but we just don't want any mistake made with that, that they mistakenly have taken that, even though for 60 years, they provide light on that end of the street where there's not that much, and it's a pretty heavy turnaround spot for all the traffic on Main Street, he wants to turn around, it's like a landing strip with two peds there, so we can allow that and we're glad they provided service here.
Yeah, they will, they'll be in the final plans. These were just, option one, two, and three were just concept plans that we made, so there wasn't final engineering or anything that really went in depth. But the final set of engineering plans will be in depth and have everything.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, the full survey didn't go up to those concept plans.
Any further public comment?
I sent a question, Johnson, 136 North Main. Where you have the, I have a poll at which, when you was walking with one of your colleagues, Mr. Finer and Mr. Penn, has decided that if we're going to come in to on both sides of driveway because there's a pole on one side, which is fine, I support that. My question is, will the apron go all the way to the street or will you just sort of cut the sidewalk through the driveway and leave three, three or four feet of the current asphalt?
What would you prefer?
I'm a little concerned about too many cuts and stuff becoming loose and becoming a problem over time, so I would rather have you cement the whole apron and also around the pole because the way it was originally considered, which I think was changed when we were out there, was that there's going to be a little tiny triangle of grass by 18 inches, by 18 inches, by 18 inches, which, I don't know what to do with it.
Yeah, how would you maintain that? Yes. If there is, if it turns out that there is room to have the sidewalk all to the left of the pole, are you fine with that or do you not?
Oh, I'm actually fine with that, though. I think she didn't believe that there would be...
That there would be enough?
Yeah. And I have another problem coming in, I just don't want many seams where it seems where things break.
That, I understand, okay, so cement all the way to the road?
Yeah, once you start the sidewalk.
Want to get, okay, that makes sense, that's fine. But yeah, when we get into the actual engineering, we'll be able to check some of these a little bit more closely and as I said, if we can move it up against the shoulder, we are going to, that is the ideal.
You're going to have to tell UBS that that accent, you're going to be finding more space. This is part of my front yard when they deliver to the eight or 10 houses.
To clear it.
Well, there'll be a nice curb there to prevent that from happening.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Rose Frosty, 116 North Main, and I actually want to commend John because he brought up a good point, I mean, with the asphalt at the ends of the driveway, I mean, that is a concern because you know how much money it is to get a driveway paint. So how much cutting are they going to be doing against the sides of the asphalt? Like John said, are they going to be making seams, is it best to have the cement all the way across the front and dip? I don't know, I would hate, I would hate, I think a driveway is an investment, I would hate to see it crumble up on the sides where they installed the sidewalk or in the front. Would you maybe find out if...
At this point in time, redoing the aprons is part of the project. Any, any driveway that we are crossing, there is the plan to do your apron.
And cement?
Yes.
Really, okay, so that's different than phase one, because phase one, that wasn't done like that, right?
Correct, but the phase one was also all the way along the road, the entire way.
Okay, all right. So that would be nicer then if they can continue to have a stripper sidewalk all in a straight line across the front of the driveways. Are we talking about the same thing and you want to see each other?
Well, if, we're not going to like redo your driveway, but if we're, if we're right at the street, if there's like a few inches that go from the sidewalk to the street, then that apron's going to continue to the street.
Yes, that would be part of the project.
But up from the sidewalk to your property, nothing would be done. But when they cut it, they're not going to cut an extra six, eight, 12, they're going to want to cut exactly where they want to put the sidewalk because they're not going to want to have to come back and fix anything, so they're going to, it's going to be right there, yeah.
Okay, good. I have another quick question. I know if phase one, they didn't go that deep, so they weren't that invasive, which is great, because you know how old our sewer lines are and any jingle jangles, it might damage something below that we won't find out until later on. So, I mean, it seems that phase two isn't going to be deep either, so it won't affect those sewer lines.
It shouldn't.
No, it definitely shouldn't. PICO's going to be doing some gas line work at the same time, but...
That we're putting in the storm sewer.
Yeah, when we're putting in the storm sewer and everything, but if anything's disturbed at the time, then they would, you know, we would take care of it then, but no, the contractor's not going to want to go a centimeter deeper than they have to.
And there's no way to get the sewer lines replaced at the same time. What if we get a windfall?
No, no, that, that wouldn't, that would be, yeah, that's, no, it's, no.
It took us more than 10 years to get to this point.
One nightmare at a time.
Thank you very much.
Any further public comment?
Joe Morris from 120 North Main. The councilman that's on the phone said that there was already a property that needs to be tweaked. Can you tell us what property that is?
All right, do you remember which property you were afraid to?
Yeah, yeah, I remember, maybe what the, that has to do with Mr. Schim's property?
112.
What he mentioned, basically, the overall thing is that people want to stay by the road and when they can, they don't want a sidewalk that in the middle of their property goes in, you know, so that half of it is on the road and half of it is in. So in his case, there was communication with an alternate option set out where if it can't fit up the road, it just shows that going all the way in and then crossing back out at the edge of its property.
Answer the question?
Yes, so I wanted to make a comment out of the answer to that question, is that I came in honestly, I'm a borough manager the other day, went through all three plans. I was against sidewalks for years, I've been there 20 years and a couple months, just because I like the side building out of the way from town, you know. But I want to thank everybody for the compromise, I would do the plans and I would ask Council tonight to vote for plan number three and not plan number one and two, since it seems like there's a lot of compromise on both sides, so that we can move forward, tweak this out, let it away, and get it done, but let's just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schim, real quick, if I let you go twice, I gotta go, I gotta bring else back twice, so.
I follow what Budros said, I'm a plumber, I'm getting my sewer replaced and I think anybody that doesn't, who's, you're asking for it because the sewer's been in there for 60, 70 years. It's cast iron and the bottom of the pipe is going to go back and upside down, I knew. I do them all day long, so I'm definitely doing a permit and I'm going to be replacing my sewer, at least into my front yard. After that, I don't care what happens, I can only take up my yard, but I definitely don't want to put a nice sidewalk and everything's all ready and find out that my cast iron is cracking and happened, got roots and bade and all that kind of stuff. I think at least we should do is maybe camera them, have them all cambered, just to, I mean, I'm just saying as, as a favorite, I can't, I mean, you should definitely camera sewers because it, you know, it's going to be a lot more expense after these sidewalks are to replace that ladder. And I think the main probably is 70, 80 foot deep, they are going to be digging the curves, right, they're three foot deep at the base, so you're only going to have about two foot of cover. And once they start to, and everything else to get that, you're going to, you're going to be able to start those pipes. The water lines are only four foot deep, so there's going to be a lot of compromise that you're going to get hit to. And some people still have the original steel services, they should definitely replace now. So just throwing that out there.
Thank you. And fun fact with sanitary sewers is that they are not maintained by this council, we have sewer authority that does just that, maybe on the second Wednesday. So it may be something worth addressing with them, but that's actually beyond what this council would take care of from legal point of view. Ms. Farmer?
I think Mr. Schim has a really good point, and since you saved money, just in terms of the budget, I understand it's a sewer authority issue, but in terms of the budget, you seem to have saved a lot of money with the trees, that it might be worth adding the cost of, of cambering all of those pipes, just, you know, because it's such, it would affect their homes so much, I mean, and while you're, before they do it.
I'll speak to that. One, that would, again, as David said, be the sewer authority and not council. And two, this project started 12 years ago and was originally projected to cost, I think it was $400,000 or $500,000 for the entire project, and now...
It was $240,000.
$240,000.
Those are the good old days.
Which, which engineering now, 12 years later, is more than, for the entire project, is more than $240,000. If we delay to look for the sewer and wait till next year, we're probably looking at another $40,000, $50,000, if not more, a year, every year, because costs go up and up and up. So I understand where you're concerned, but for us to just look into that option is going to take us into next year. And the next year, we're looking at next year's costs and next year's engineering and next year's rules and next year's regulations and the costs just balloons and balloons and balloons.
And we have grant funding.
Yeah.
All right, that's the other issue at play here, is that we have to spend the grant money within a window of time, otherwise we lose it and this project falls apart. So the timeline is not super tight, but we don't have the luxury of kicking around and, you know, discussing all the options that are theoretically possible. Yeah.
Johnson, 136 North Main. Just a quick question, I assume your contractors carry insurance if they were damaged?
Correct.
Yep.
If there's something already damaged, well, you know, you're no bad, that's a different story, but if they damaged it, we're covered as, or we're covered as well.
Yeah, any contractor that we dealt with would be bonded and would have to incur any damage that they caused.
Right, and a lot of those probably state requirements because it's the grant funding, so in addition to due diligence.
Including what goes to the homeowner and through the house or just along the street?
Anything within the borough's right of way would be covered.
So that's just along the street?
Within the right of way, which is...
Where I am.
Yeah.
It should not be going outside of the...
Right, which is, you know, it's, the destruction's limited to that zone anyhow. All right. Yes, one more.
One more, and I'll be done. 134 North Main Street, a little bit cresced, I might kill me by, and my, thank you to the council for your efforts to create a compromised plan. We did have some concerns about the plans as they were constituted a little while back and you guys made a real effort to come out, to talk to the community, to understand everybody's concerns and to make changes to the plan to accommodate those needs. We're very grateful and I would also encourage you to vote for option three.
Thank you.
That I promised.
See, I did it, I went twice and now here we go.
There's a fire hydrant between our properties, Joe Morris and our cars, and the sidewalk already runs in front of it on the plan, but I'm just wondering, what happens if they have to repair the fire hydrant? How do they, and the homeowner is responsible for the sidewalk now, so now, what if there's some kind of leak, break, whatever, compromise to the hydrant and they have to get down in there and the sidewalk is in front of them? Then what happens? Who's responsible?
I confess this is not a question I know the answer to, Liz, you experienced with this one.
I mean, if they have to do any type of work and they would, that would require an HOP if they're going to impact the existing sidewalk, and whoever has to fix that would be responsible for repairing the sidewalk as part of the HOP process.
Who would that be, that the water department, I guess, the sewer authority? I don't know.
Yeah. Whoever's responsible for the hydrant.
It would be the water company.
Probably water department.
But yes, but they would need to get an HOP from the borough, so the borough would be aware and they would ask for escrow just in case they don't repair it and the borough would have the money to repair it themselves. That's how that works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so with that, let's review. We have a motion to approve option three.
Yes.
And proceed with the engineering work.
Correct, and with the engineering work, if we're able to keep along the street, anywhere we're able to, meeting with all PICO and PENDOT requirements, we will.
All right, and after much debate, I will call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, any extensions? Can I motion carry six to zero? Long time getting there, but we are here. Liz, do you have anything else on your, all right. I believe then, finer spot on the agenda, we are to Ms. Johnson, your manager's report.
First, I would like to thank the American Legion and the WBCB Command Corps for all the time that they put in and planning events yesterday. The parade was probably one of our most well-attended, the memorial service was amazing as well, we had a lot of great speeches, WBCB actually livestreamed and you can go online and watch it. I think we're up to 177 views, so if anybody missed any of those amazing speeches, you could go on there and watch. Just a reminder that our trash collection day has changed for this week only, it's going to be Thursday and Saturday, and that's because of the memorial holiday. And I also want to thank Sergeant Golden and Jake Henry Bommer for their assistance in getting our golf carts up and running, they were put to good use yesterday as well, and that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions from Council?
I have one.
Oh, then go ahead.
The showers that we were talking about.
Ah, yes.
PENDOT is going to be resursing Atton Avenue from approximately Hookover Lane all the way down to Delver Avenue, and they would like to put bike showers on the road. And I provided a copy for everybody. They would ultimately pay for them to put on, but then we would maintain them ongoing. So it's just a, they're doing all bits of design work and they just need a decision that we would like to see them or not.
All right, do they provide timeline for when they need that answer?
They would like, well, because they're doing all the planning stuff, they would like it sooner than later.
Probably no surprise there.
Yeah.
And for anyone that's not familiar, feel free to take this and pass it around, but these are sort of, we have the bike icon on the road, the arrows that push point forwards, if anybody wants to take a look at that, feel free to come around.
Fancy word for paint.
It is a fancy word for paint, that's well put. All right, so I guess we open that up for a little bit of discussion, pros, cons, I think I hear Mr. Finer on the phone there.
I would like to thank you, yeah, so I'd just like to say the showers, from my research about them, have been very successful because obviously they're super cheap to put in. There are bikes that go up and down there that I've certainly seen, actually, one of those people myself, so it helps because it sends a message to drivers, okay, there may be bikes, remember to look around, but also they have another purpose, which is they can help calm traffic because people realize that they're impacted, I mean, so they, they could have a slight, it's already a win for the borough and the fact that they're doing all the work and their cost does, it's kind of a no brainer.
And the other thoughts?
I just had to curate, you know, I don't know what, like, Harp would think of it because it goes through some historic areas, and that, that would be just a question I would have, is someone would be supported by Harp or Paula, which of the sense? And that, that would be just a question I would have. Would someone be supported by Hart or, I don't know, Paul, would you have the sense?
I have a good question, though.
I think generally speaking, road signs, PennDOT, anything like that is beyond the jurisdiction of Hart. Probably how that's written.
I think we actually just had this discussion maybe just before most of this council. Long, where they gave Main Street, where they, they wanted to put these on the entire length of Main Street. Also, there's discussion of that at that time.
My question would be, what is the, what is the actual maintenance cost and maintenance schedule of this?
You'd have to see how they wear. I'm sure we could buy a stem tunnel. We do have a P machine that we did buy quite a few years ago. And, and he does our lines and stuff outside, it's something that he would have to do.
Paula, PennDOT doesn't paint when they repave the state roads?
They do it once, first time.
So every X number of years, they would repaint them? Or never? They would never repaint these? Got it.
I think, good question, might be to fire back to them and say, do you have average costs from other towns?
Just for maintenance, just so we know.
Just to give us an idea of what we're talking about.
Before we decide to do something that could cost.
My guess is that paint's not gonna be the most expensive thing in the world, but I'm, you know, wanna be sure.
It shouldn't be, but I would be curious how often you have to put them, so how many are there? That's what I'm wondering.
Every 10 years.
Because it's the labor.
Right, would be my other question, how many are there? And then, do they have any requirements as to when they need to be touched up? Because their opinion of what needs to be redone could be different from ours.
And then also the fact that cars are gonna be physically driving over them is gonna cause them to wear much faster than the yellow lines that people don't actually drive on.
All right. All right, so I think we have consensus there. I need more discussion, but I think what we're looking at is just asking for a little more detail about the maintenance schedule, costs, exactly how many there are. Because Liz noted, the issue here would be labor costs, not materials. I think two weeks is probably not a terribly long time to ask them to wait if they get us that information. So we will follow up at a future meeting. Any other items?
And as we can feel the air gushing out.
Yes, it did. All right, so that concludes our manager's report. Mr. Ross, or anything for solicitors reporting?
I will report to Stephen.
Thank you. You're making friends here. Mayor Harding?
Just a couple of quick things to jump on Matt Johnson's report. So of course to the Legion and W B C B for all the hard work they did and everyone involved, it was great. Also to the R D R Police Department for, you know, again, pulling off a big day from 6:00 AM to probably 4:00 PM in terms of their work. Also to W B C B in that aspect, too. So a nice gesture by them to livestream it, and hopefully that's a tradition that starts to continue. And then just what I saw, I'll tell you, one, congratulations to council. I saw the community come out and say, thank you for listening to us and then hearing us and working with us. That is a 100% different tone than we had six years ago, when I remember discussing sidewalks at some point. And at the same time, these were in the, in the audience communicating that they weren't being involved. So to all of those involved in that, the borough staff, congratulations. That's the way it should work.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to council member reports. Mr. Curtin's not here, so Mr. Ross, if you have anything additional.
I do not. We covered it all.
All right, I keep you busy. Ms. Segal Morris?
Nothing to impart, thank you.
Uh, myself, I have nothing additional. Ms. Thompson?
Um, just quickly, at our next general government meeting in two weeks, we'll be talking about the recovery stimulus. So if each committee chair could take a look at the spending guidelines that were sent out and come with ideas. It's gonna be a little tricky. They're very odd categories. We've already targeted videography livestream equipment to make hybrid meetings permanent going forward. But beyond that, we're scratching heads a little bit. So that money is on the table. We'll be receiving it soon. So any ideas, please email them or tell me now, Matt.
Can I get a copy of all the guidelines so I can go through it all and see if.
I think they were emailed to everyone, but I will resend.
Yeah, I know.
We can send out there, a little bit long.
Do you have any language about whether or not you could love to do a R A C P grant that you guys are now eligible for?
We can check, yeah.
Didn't look like it, but Bucky's firm did a great write-up about, in layman's terms, for all us normal people, what it all says. So I, I recommend reading that as well.
I'll check it out. Good to find a little pulse.
It's, it's a bit of an odd program, and a lot of local governments found this out with the CARES money as well, which is compared to our annual budget, we're getting a pretty big sum. But then the categories we can spend it on are somewhat constricted. And it's use it or lose it. So we sort of get into the situation of, well, we can't do what maybe we really wanna do with it, but it seems sort of silly to not use it on something. You know, so we're gonna try the best we can to look at, can we, you know, something that we might need to do down the road anyway, can we make it qualify? And where we can, we'll certainly do that. But this is gonna be work in progress, so good luck. All right, Mr. McCann?
Um, Community Economic Development met tonight and Frank Lyons from the Continental came. And we were talking about the outdoor seating in the tents and extending that. So that is something, he presented his reasons, you know, certainly businesses in the restaurant industry was hard hit. You know, there's still a lot of people who aren't comfortable eating indoors. And he even talked about that his restaurant at full capacity, the same tables that are used inside are being used outside and just spread out a little bit more. And that he hasn't had any complaints at his place of business. And that for him, it's, you know, helping them to survive and kind of recover. It's just the next phase after we've been through it to recover. And, and he's asking till Thanksgiving to hold open that exemption allows outdoor seating in the tent and that, and that parking lot. So I don't know, I, I certainly would be make, make, comfortable making a motion, but maybe it's something to table and put on the agenda for next week. I don't know what your feelings are about that, but I think his, his points were compelling. And, and I do think businesses were hard hit, especially a lot of the businesses have taken account for his, his business. He has asked council for an extension, and I think that's something that I would support as an individual council member, but.
I think we can discuss this now if we want, but the best course of action is probably to schedule this for a future agenda meeting. I've got a feeling that we're gonna need to think this through and put together a written document that addresses all of the questions that could come up as we transition. Like, as you noted, it's, it's a good thing that we're getting back to normal. But I think we can all agree that it's probably not a good approach to just say, okay, starting tomorrow, we've gotta go back to the old way. For now, certainly between now and the next council meeting, we're, we're not gonna change anything in terms of the waivers that have already been in place. But I think it, it would be time to, to put something together and provide some guidance so our businesses know what to expect as well.
I would love to see a joint recommendation from Public Safety and Community Economic Development. Because I know Chief Kelly had some concerns about public safety with the tents. So perhaps something between those two committees that balances our public safety concerns with business concerns, finding compromise there. We could vote on that.
I like it.
I would add, couldn't force a public council.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and it's gonna be a collaborative effort of those committees and, and the borough staff.
And then just rolling in that we're expecting a change at the end of the month in regulations again from the state level to even opening the door, so that could be a factor in the policy.
Right, and that's sort of, you know, maybe too much in the weeds, but in the background of this, so if you may recall, that there was a referendum on the ballot in the primary on May 18th. That referendum gives the state legislature the authority to revoke Governor Wolf's emergency declaration. And there's a 100% chance that that will happen as soon as the election is certified. So that means that a lot of things are gonna change. Council, we're obviously back in person already, but the authority under which we have you meetings would be revoked. And a lot of these other waivers that are in place are gonna go when, when the emergency declaration gets pulled back. You know, so again, if that happens to be now and next council meeting, I think everybody can be confident that we're not gonna come up on your door and start giving out fines or anything like that. But it is time for us to, to chart a course. All right. That was Mr. McCann's report, and he sort of went on a tangent. Anything else?
Ah, that is.
All right, thank you. And finally, Mr. Feiner, if you have anything to report.
I do. Community outreach meant today, actually is just connected to what Council President Thompson said, that we are looking at kind of this future, post-pandemic future, where one of the nice things that has happened during the pandemic is the level of participation in borough meetings was up because of the ability for people to call in from, from home or from anywhere else, which of course supports people who are elderly or ill or working multiple jobs or traveling. So I'm happy to see that council is in support of that. I'm also happy to see that we have now funds that we can access that support that. So what community outreach would like to do, between my technical expertise as well as Council President Thompson's heard knowledge and time, is to invest in helping Paula and the borough set that system up and make sure we get good help to do it right and in, in a way that can manage itself and not be a burden in, in future years. So we'd like to, to lend our hands and get that to happen.
Thank you. All right, that concludes council member reports. If anything other, or anything else from council for general discussion? All right, Paula?
Five days this weekend, so just be aware there could be delays on Sunday. I'm sure you're all running. And also, the American Legion Auxiliary is having a community yard sale on Saturday, so I encourage you to head out there, spend some money. And I also wanted to ask or thank our A V team for tonight. He's helping us get us livestreamed. And that is it.
Thank you. So unless there are any other items from a council member, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.